President.
President. Council Hogan.
Present.
Present. Okay, so we first one we got is petition of national grid to install PVC conduit from an existing manhole to the property at 20 Neptune Boulevard.
How you doing? How are ya?
Good. How was everyone?
Pretty good.
The conduits to supply the new power, the new work at the LYNCA. It's a short crossing of about five feet or so.
It's not in the new tire, is it? Is it in the new tire that was all just tied down there?
I don't know exactly, but there is an existing manhole, so it just would've come right out of there.
It's going across the driveway.
Okay.
I took a look at the area already.
All right. Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Good. We'll take the table. There's okay, take a motion.
Motion. Take the table for the papers. Okay. On favor, right?
Yep, on favor. Right, opposed?
Petition of national grid to install one joint home pole on Barrett Court and install one wooden pole, down guy anchor the pole to a pole guy in front of 17 Barrett Court.
Motion? Motion approved.
Second?
Second. On favor? Opposed? Carries.
Petition of national grid to begin on River Street to install a conduit to sweep up pole 28 for primary 3PH riser to feed the new apartment building at 6 Needham's Landing Road.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second. On favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Petition of national grid to install one joint home pole on River Street and a pole to be used as a primary 3PH riser to feed new apartment building at 16, 6 Needham's Landing Road.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second. On favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
And last one, petition of national grid to begin on Commercial Street installing six new manholes and 2,700 feet of conduits and trenching to Circa Ave, Carolyn Street, Day Street, and Harding Street. Conduits will continue north crossing the Linway towards the proposed new 19th Street Linway Associates.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second. On favor? Opposed? Carries.
Okay.
Folks, thank you. The third one that you passed after River Street?
Yes. The last one?
The last one. There's four.
There's four.
Right, the third one right after River Street before Commercial?
Well, there were two for River, right?
Two Rivers, yeah.
Saw one joint home pole on River Street to be used as a primary 3PH riser to feed new apartment building at 6 Needham.
Okay, good.
Okay. And then the other one was the same address, but they were two different petitions.
Okay, thank you.
Was there a Houston app one, just in table for you?
Um, yes.
That word's gonna stick in my mind forever, Houston app. That's how I get in and out of town all the time.
Darren, Seer was concerned about it.
Okay.
But, um...
That was a pole removal request.
Still working on it?
Yeah.
I heard there was great progress.
Okay. All right, so those things have to be done here?
Yeah.
Is there any other business?
That's it.
Your motion is adjourned.
Thank you, council.
All favor? Opposed? Thank you.
President. President. Council Stavitt?
Present.
President. Council Field?
Present.
President. Council Hogan absent. Council Upia absent. Okay, first is a proposed ordinance adopting the stretch energy code in the City of Lynn.
And if, Brian, if you want to take the chair, I can make a few comments on this. This is the, one of the criteria required that the city, in order to become a green community, we have to pass this stretch code. So this is one of the final things, and then we're very close, I believe, by putting this down for a public hearing, that once we pass this, the city will then become a green community and will receive immediately upon being designated as a green community over half a million dollars. And then each year, we're eligible for up to a quarter of a million in grant money towards energy efficient projects, whether it be in the schools, the fire department, any city building. And if you have any questions, I'd gladly entertain answering.
Council Stavitt? Thank you. I know one of the concerns when we discussed it after the presentation at the last meeting was potential impacts on contractors and different things that they may need to do. I don't know if maybe Mike can...
Council Walsh did express some of those concerns, Council Stavitt, and he spoke with a counselor, and he told me personally that he was okay with it. And keep in mind that, I think it's 250 communities in the state that have approved the stretch code. So it's not really like that far out of the realm. It does require new construction to implement more energy efficient type construction methods. So therefore, it can be a little more pricier, but the savings realized from that efficiency is soon comes back in the form of either the tenants or that contractor. And many contractors are currently using that code to begin with.
So as more and more communities take this on, it becomes more of the norm?
It is.
In the building code?
It is.
Do you see that as, if I could ask?
Mr. Donovan?
Eventually, the base code will catch up to it, but there is a financial impact on existing properties. I saw the presentation. It gave you some depth, but like anything else, when you increase the code, you increase the cost of rehabilitating, rehabilitating existing property or renovating. A guy renovation of a building would require you to conform to this code. In addition, a house would require you to, for that portion, to conform to this code. Opening up your walls, changing a heating system can have impacts in regards to the stretch code that may not be of that importance in these base codes. So it will save more energy. If the person who's doing the renovations, the homeowner, is willing to build the paperwork and follow through, the utility company, there is money to get back.
In credits?
In credits. Rebates, but it does take some work. We're gonna get there eventually with the base code, probably by 2018, but I just would like to point out that there is a cost that wasn't presented in the presentation.
But it is starting to become more of the norm as more communities...
The majority of communities in the Commonwealth have adopted it. It's puzzling why the Commonwealth just hasn't mandated. I haven't figured out why they just don't mandate it because they have the authority to do so. Instead, they do it this way, but I mean, right now, the vast majority of the communities have adopted the stretch code.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I make a motion. We present to the council to sit down.
Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan absent. Council Upia absent. The second item is an act authorizing the City of Lynn to use certain park land for combined sewer overflow control.
So is, what's next?
You need to move here.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will call on it. We'll call.
Yeah. Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan absent. Council Upia absent.
Okay. Motion adjourned. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
President, Council Stavitt?
Present.
President, Council Barton?
Present.
President, Council Chakutis?
Present.
President, Council Seer?
Present.
He showed up in a minute. Oh, me and him.
I brought the money. Transfer the sum of $980.89 from the County of Lynn Police Expense, City County of Lynn Police Expense for unexpected prior year bills.
Motion approved.
Second.
We'll call.
Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes.
Certifies available fund, the amount of $45,000 is allowed to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Department of Mental Health for jail diversion grants.
Motion approved.
Second.
We'll call.
Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes.
Certifies available fund, the amount of $760,000 is allowed to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Health and Human Services to fund a grant initiative for the FY 20-21 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes.
Certifies available fund, the amount of $167,287 is allowed to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 9/11 Department Support and Initiative Grant.
Motion approved.
Second. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes.
Certifies available fund, the amount of $20,986.24 is allowed to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 9/11 Department Training Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes.
Establish one revolving account in the section, chapter 44, section 53 and a half for the purposes of accepting a $2,500 grant from the Solomon Foundation to conduct a Market Street parking study in relation to Phase 2 of the Northern Strand Project. The balance of the cost of this study will be paid from the mayor's office budget. The Solomon Foundation works with public and private partners to identify projects which will significantly improve greater Boston's public parks and greenways. They cultivate these initiatives by providing upfront design, technical and planning assistance, and work to build coalitions to implement them. The Solomon Foundation has partnered with the city for Phase 1 of the Northern Strand Project, which is a bike and pedestrian path that primarily runs along a former MBTA rail. The path will connect from the Saugus border in our west side neighborhood through the downtown to our waterfront and will lead into neighboring communities as far as Everett and future expansion into Somerville. This account involving funds will be used at the mayor's discretion and can be closed once all funds are utilized for this given purpose. President, this is the committee.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So have we had any public meetings or anything about any of this?
Any of what?
Putting the bike path down Market Street? Has anybody reached out to the counselor of the lot or the businesses or...
I have no idea.
Yes, there were a few meetings. Actually, there's been quite a few meetings on it.
All right, so it seems like the community is in favor of this?
Yeah, they've already started the bike path down on, okay, I wouldn't know if they've already put it in.
All right, because the only reason why I'm saying this is that down in Malden and Medford area where they put the bike path, there's all kinds of issues and problems that are going on with it. It's messing up the traffic in the area. Residents are complaining about it as well as businesses. So I'm just saying that, I mean...
The meetings I sat in with, it was Mass Development, mayor's office, police department, they were all involved in different aspects, but I was just involved in the downtown area, not the other part.
So that's your area, and you're in favor of it? All right, motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes.
Order that the city clerk be directed to cause notice to be advertised that meetings in the qualified orders of City of Lynn will be held in several polling places designated for the local elections. Local elections will be held a primary on September 3, 2019, and the final on November 5, 2019. Polls will be opened at 7:00 a.m. and closed at 8:00 p.m. All citizens will be in the several precincts in which they are entitled to vote. Between said hours, give their votes on one ballot for Council Lodge, Ward Councillors, and School Committee. This is the committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
We'll call.
Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes. Motion for emergency on all the transfers and the grants tonight?
Second.
Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes. Motion adjourned.
Second.
We cannot do.
Council Stavitt?
Present.
Present. Council Upia absent. Council Pucci absent. Council Walsh?
Present.
Present. Council Field?
Present.
Present.
Okay, two items on the agenda. The first is request from Ernie's Harvest Time to use the city hall parking lot for parking for their block party. Is there anybody here from Ernie's?
Yeah.
Hi. How you doing?
Hi.
Just tell us who you are.
I'm Harna. I work at the food project, but we're partnered with Ernie's on this.
Okay. Just tell us, rephrase the real quick.
Yeah, so basically, we're part of Ernie's Harvest Time on Lee Grove, which is like our community engagement initiative, partnered with Ernie's Harvest Time to hold this block party to celebrate local people in the city. And so because we're doing this in the parking lot of Ernie's, we were wondering, because City Hall is early on Friday, if customers of the store could use the city hall parking that Friday so that we're not taking up extra space, basically, their parking lot, which is like right adjacent to the city hall parking lot.
Okay, so it's not the Johnson Street lot further up, it's the actual city hall?
Yeah, I was thinking the actual city hall.
Okay, only for parking, right?
Only for parking. We're not gonna have any like that, there's really there, just only for extra parking for that movement, which is this Friday from about, I would say, like 4:00 p.m.
Is there anything going on at the other party?
Nope.
No? So... No problem, make a motion to approve. Just let it out of parking, no. Okay. Just let parking, no. So that they don't take it... Motion's been made for parking only.
Parking only.
So second. Second. Made second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Upia absent. Council Pucci absent. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're set.
Do I, do I need any, like, paper or anything? Or just like...
I have new contacts, I think I will be releasing them tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
And Lynn Kim can get you a copy of the video.
You know, that's really, we were there earlier today about the same event, so that's kind of funny. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is request from Better Days Church to perform acoustic music under the bridge in Central Square on August 17, 24, 31st. Is there somebody from Better Days Church here?
Yes.
How you doing?
My name is Danny, I'm still one of the years in the church. We basically do, try to do some different kind of activities every year in the city. Nothing baseless, something very, never ever open. Not, it's not only Christian music, any kind of positive kind of music. We basically want to do it around the area near the train station, outside of the train station.
By where the clock is?
Um...
In the middle of the square?
Yeah, yeah. And basically, we're gonna have about three people there playing acoustic instruments in one segment.
Okay.
So it'll be a total of like four people.
In what times?
Uh, we're like in between 1 and 3.
So 1, 3?
Yes, 3.
Okay, so all three of those days, are there any...
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Upia absent. Council Pucci absent. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you're all set. Good luck. Uh, motions, motion to adjourn. Start that thing, all in favor? Thank you.
Council Walsh?
Present.
President. Council Hogan?
Present.
President. Council Field?
Present.
President. Council Lozey absent. Council Net?
Present.
Present. Okay, we have new taxi operators. We have Luis, Jose, Penella, Mora. Thank you. What?
How are ya?
Motion approved.
Your motion approved.
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you can go now to clerk's office Thursday morning, okay? Okay, good, okay? Thank you.
Rafael Cristobal? Rafael?
Hi.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thursday morning, clerk's office. Thank you.
Milton Lopez? Milton Lopez?
Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And Moises Martinez Gillian. Moises, this is his second.
Motion to deny.
Motion denied.
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we have a new livery business, Lynn Safety Transportation. Maryliz?
How are ya?
Willa, Willa. Is she here? Maryliz? Okay.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All favor?
How many vehicles?
How many vehicles? One.
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Second. All favor? Opposed? Okay, Thursday, clerk's office.
And Maryliz is also a livery driver, if you wanted.
Take it as...
Yeah. Take it as... Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, Rafael Cristobal?
Rafael? Okay.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thursday morning.
Samuel Gomez Medina. Samuel?
Samuel, how are ya?
Motion approved.
Second. Approve. We have a second. All favor? Opposed? Thursday morning. Yeah, okay. Thanks. Anyone translate?
Could anyone translate?
Can I translate? Tell me the license Thursday morning, clerk's office. Okay? Okay.
Jonathan Reyes? Jonathan?
Motion approved.
Second. We have a second. All favor? Opposed? Thursday morning. Yeah, okay. Thanks, yeah.
Francisco Soriano? Monica Francisco?
Who you on?
Motion approved.
Your motion approved. We have a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thursday morning.
Colin? Bill Alona Gonzalez? Colin?
Motion approved.
Your motion approved. The motion approved, we have a second?
Second.
All favor? Opposed, Thursday morning, Thursday morning.
Colin? Bill Alona Gonzalez? Colin?
Motion approved.
The motion approved, we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Thursday morning.
Okay, we have extended hour renewals, a 30-day review. The first one is 60 Boston Street McDonald's. Somebody have their phone?
Hi, good morning.
This just wanted to review?
Okay.
From our original...
Questions, comments from anybody?
No.
So what is this, this is 60?
No, they didn't, they weren't on a stick, they were just a review.
It was a 60-day review. Make sure everything's outside, be a clean, if you're nearby, you guys, the property that they're located in, 50 Boston?
60.
60, 60 Boston Street, they have their own private company that cleans the parking lot, so. Motion to approve.
Second.
Doesn't need any approval?
Just a grant.
Yeah, motion to grant?
Yeah. Any other discussion?
We're good.
Second? Second, all favor? Opposed, all right.
Thanks so much. Okay, 65 Boston Street, CVS Pharmacy was denied and now it's table for review.
Okay.
How we doing?
Fine, how are you?
Good, but we've had a...
Peter Lyons, attorney for CVS. And with me tonight is Alicia and Rocky, two store managers, one from Boston Street, one from South Common.
We've had discussions, they've addressed their concerns, we'll follow up them throughout the year. We have contact for the managers and for the legal counsel, so motion to approve the 24-hour license on Boston Street.
Any other discussion? A motion?
Second.
Second.
I have one, one thing I'd like to add, a concern that you brought up?
Yep.
And Jim brought up, with regard to the discrepancy on the number of waste barrels. At Boston Street, we have 12, at our South Common Street location, there's one. One of the problems we have at the Common Street location, which I didn't realize, and she was telling me, why don't you tell them, Alicia, what's going on?
I was just saying that animals were living in them, so we tried to pull them.
Okay.
And they recently had rodent infestation control in, and they have it now on a frequent basis, correct?
We get service once a month, we don't have any problem inside the building at all. But outside, what if we were like changing them, like they would like be chopping out, so that's why we did...
Were they being changed daily?
Correct.
They were being changed daily?
They were being changed daily, and the issue was like, again, it's not really an issue, but with having the trash bag outside, then people would go and drop like whole TVs near the trash.
That's what you need to respect. So that's something that corporate needs to address.
Yes.
Okay, it's not a city issue, it's a corporate issue for your property. Okay, so those are the discussion that we had. What you think corporate should be doing to support them in those problems?
Small hole at the top of the barrel.
It shouldn't be the employees, if they're not experts on how to control rodent populations or trash, that's up to corporate to support them.
And security cameras may help the other thing, trash, trash disposal and things like that.
All right, any other discussion? So we had a motion, motion's been seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
122 Boston Street, Boston Shell?
This is James.
Just make sure it's cleaned up outside.
Yeah, yeah, we clean, we have the law, yeah.
All right, see you.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second?
This is gonna go to 3609?
We can waive the 6090, motion approved.
Motion approved, second, all favor? Opposed?
All set. No.
Okay, 124 Boston Street, Taco Bell?
Good evening. How you doing? Fred, is this manager?
You guys got a landscaping, are you saying?
Yeah, we got the landscaping.
Okay, they cleaned up?
Yes.
Are they gonna do anything more?
They're maintaining, we're having them come in twice a month instead of the monthly rate now, so.
Good, looks better, thank you. Motion to waive the 6090 and approve.
Second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All favor? Opposed?
All right, thank you.
And the last one is 525 Linway, the golf station.
How you doing?
This is Erin.
You guys cleaned it up all day, it's getting kinda high right in the corner, it's a dangerous corner.
Yes.
You gotta keep that brush, that's overgrowing. Down.
What happened, we used to have one, a trash paper, but now we had a...
It's more the grass that's growing high, keep that, you know, people can't see when they're coming around that corner.
We did that on...
It looks better, okay. Motion to waive the 6090 and motion approved.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion, second, all favor? Opposed, all right, we're set. Thank you.
And we have a 306090 review for 371 Summer Street Express Auto and Tire Review. Who's here?
How you doing?
It's a 30-day.
Council Hogan?
All right, one thing, you guys aren't parking cows on Warren or George Street, right?
No.
All right, just each, each of the businesses I'm going through, just because I've got resident complaints about that there. I have been buying a site, the lots lined now, they have their own spots, the owner of the building did that there, so their area's been cleaned, so we'll move one to the next, to 60.
What is this right now?
This is a 30-day, go to 60.
Yep.
Okay, so 60, okay. Any other discussion on it?
No.
I've been by the site too, I think they've done some, good job.
Yep.
You guys are doing a good job, keep it up. And so we have a motion to approve, to go to 60.
Yep.
Right?
Second? All favor?
Aye.
And Wally's Auto, 10 Heath Court, is 60-day review.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Mr. Hogan?[1346.33]